We will call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand up and join us as we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag being over here?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approving of the agenda, is there any extras or anything else that we need to add to the agenda this evening?
There aren't any extras.
The only thing that I would like to add, and I'll call it number seven, is Anna is here, Anna Doubles is here, our school rep, and it's not her week, but I'm always interested to hear what's going on in the classroom and activities, so we'll add that as number seven, just Anna Doubles, and her student presentation. Having said that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Salute.
Katie?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Scheduled presenters, Stephen.
Stephen is not able to make a night, but he did do his presentation via video, so if there are questions at the end, we'll do our best to answer them, and I think this should...
I want to give a brief presentation tonight on the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, some updates on goals from last year and goals that were set for this year. So I'm Stephen Strauss, the K-12 Assistant Principal, and I'm the staff liaison for the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. The state requires that all districts with 10 or more American Indian students have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. So Cannon Falls has more than 10 students that fall in that category, so we're required by the state to have an APAC. The committee just kind of serves an advisory role to the district and to the board in terms of things that should be done to make everything culturally relevant and to make sure that students have equitable educational opportunities. And some of the goals that the committee set for this year, I know they're very, very happy of, and we'll get to those in a couple slides here. The committee is mainly made up of parents of American Indian students, but it can also be American Indian community members, high school students, and school staff. So far, one meeting has been held, that was mainly to go over last year's goals and then to set goals for this year and kind of see where we're at. And then in January, the committee and then the board will do a resolution of concurrence, that is when the committee states whether or not they believe that the board has done all that it can to help out American Indian students. Some items that were accomplished last year, the funds that we got as a district from the state need to be spent on certain things related to our goals, and one of the things that was done last year is culturally inclusive books, games, and toys were bought for the pre-K classrooms, I know those preschool teachers are very excited about that. There were new library sections completed in both the middle school and the high school, excuse me, the middle school, high school, and the elementary buildings. This is almost complete, this is kind of more of a, just a section in which students can go to to find diverse characters, so it's an easier access for them instead of looking through all of the different sections to find some of these things. An all-teaching staff last year attended a staff development session on Native American education, and there were many high school students last year that went on a college or career visit, and that's something that we're tweaking a little bit going into this next year for our goals. So our first bullet point here, talking about me as the staff liaison, again, I technically don't vote on these goals, that's what the parents do on the committee, I'm the staff liaison to help kind of make sure that stuff gets done. I will be checking in with students in grades nine through 12 that are American Indian to help create a post-secondary plan, not just for post-secondary education, but for education, or military, or career, or any other type of program that students might want to do after they graduate from high school and leave our district. So we're going to kind of focus that in, so we've got something to look forward to after they leave our district and graduate. We'll be visiting Prairie Island and touring the reservations, seeing the buffalo, and that will be composed of our sixth graders, because Ms. Clappert incorporates a lot of Native American education into her classroom, as well as district students that are American Indian. The district will be hosting a family engagement night that will be promoting all different things that the district has to offer, not just related to engaging students in terms of diverse ways, but just looking at all of the diverse ways that the school has in terms of academics, activities, arts, athletics, racially diverse, all the different programs that we have, whether it's SAD, Honor Society, Student Council, just to kind of get the community member and parents to see all the good things that the school has to offer, and to kind of make connections on those things. Hoping to have a book club this year for students, and we're also hoping to have at least four American Indian members beyond the diversity club, kind of get some more representation that way. And then another goal is to also have at least one Indigenous speaker present to students, parents, and community members this year sometime, okay? So that is all that I've got for a presentation for the night. Feel free to email me or call me if you have any questions on this, and I'll keep kind of the board informed as we move forward with some of these things on what we're accomplishing and all the good things that are going on with the district related to the committee. So again, let me know if you have any questions, I hope you all have a good night. All right, take care.
Jeff, do you think that if they have any, if they have any questions for Stephen, they can certainly email, not the school email, correct?
Yeah, and I think probably the biggest thing is that, as you remember from last year and I believe the year before, there's a resolution that needs to be passed after January 1st by the board to saying that this group is in concurrence with the board and everything that we're doing to try to promote, as Stephen mentioned, the cultural diversity and equity in education for these students as well, so.
Okay. Anybody have any other input? Moving forward, public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during the public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with the school or the building administrators and/or the superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and not to exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debates during that three to five, but will take the information and find answers that are appropriate. As part of the board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at the board, public board meeting. So I don't know if anyone had emailed Lori, but we haven't used that as a format in the past. So does anyone wish to speak to the board? Mark?
Mark Lund, a taxpayer of the district, I got a question on the resolution for the filling of the vacant board position. The second sentence reads, whereas the vacancy occurred more than 90 days prior to the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November, in the year the vacancy occurred, prior to the fourth year of the vacant term. It's my understanding in the state statute that if it's more than 90 days of the vacancy, then there needs to be a special election. So I'm curious to know if there's going to be a special election based on this resolution. Thank you.
Please.
Dawn Lightning, and I forgot my notes in my car that I made a transfer, so I'm going to wing it. I reviewed the agenda for tonight's meeting, and there were a couple things on the agenda that I was looking for, perhaps my answers as you discuss some of these items. The first one had to do with the superintendent's report mentioned that Red Wing Schools now is not going to be, doesn't qualify for the Achievement and Integration Plan anymore. So my question was, is Cannon Falls still planning on pursuing the A&amp;I program, and if so, are they going to be looking for a different partner, or are they going to, and if they are going to look for a different partner, district, do they, you know, is there something, a district in mind that you're planning on using? The other thing too had to do with the resolution for the referendum that you're going to be proposing today, and the second, or the first reading, or whatever it is. You know, I went through, I sat through last month's meeting, I read the 140-page review and comment report that you're sending to the state, I read the referendum, and there's two questions in that referendum. The first question just says that it will be a tax increase, and it's for the technical portion, but it doesn't give any numbers related to that particular question. It only, you know, it just, very vague, very open-ended, and I would not even know what I was saying yes or no to in that question. Question two, I fully understand. I have a house that's 40 years old and would be a very good candidate for a remake of the money pit, so I get old facilities and the need for repairing old facilities, and you know, in question two, he kind of laid out exactly what the funds would be used for, but I don't get that out of question one. And if people are going to be voting for this referendum, my suggestion would be to better phrase question one, so that people know what they're voting for, rather than an open-ended spending budget that's vague. The third item, I went through and looked through some of those monthly bills, and I have some questions about some of those expenditures. There was one in there for, it was over $6,000, made out to the Bank of America for travel and conference fees. I'm kind of wondering what kind of travel and conference fee Bank of America would have sponsored that would have related to school activities. There was also another $7,000 that was paid to other school districts for tuition fees, which again, I'm kind of confused why Cannon Falls is paying tuition fees to another school district, and if we do that, do we get that from other school districts as well? I guess I'm not clear on that. There were some other ones related to, oh, solar garden fees, there was some solar garden fees, $3,300 or so, that were paid out to a company that has one principal in it, Aunt Reed Rickerson. It was a company created last year, and there's no, there's no background on that company. So we're paying solar garden fees to a company that, I'm kind of wondering why we're paying solar garden fees. And then there was also another company, US, or no, SSI MN. There was over $21,000 in utility fees paid to that company, on top of the $18,000 that was paid to the city of Cannon Falls. And again, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what that company is, or who that company is, and what kind of utilities they're providing. You know, it's those kind of things. The question, when I was looking through all of those different expenses, the total for those expenses, and I was kind of wondering what they went to, was $136,000 for two months, which is almost a third of the $450,000 shortfall that you were talking about last month. So if you're going to ask for more money in a referendum, that's the kind of spending, that's the kind of transparency that I think the public wants to see and have answers to before they say yes to additional spending. Thank you.
We won't engage with those things at this time, you know that, Dawn, you've been to enough meetings, but certainly if you plug into our business manager, he can answer any of those questions for you, or the soup as well, so please feel free to. Okay, anyone else? Jackie?
Who's your business manager that we can ask these questions of?
Josh Davis.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll deal with him in just a moment. So we have followed the procedure for election of the applicant, so I just want to be clear with that, we follow procedure always on that. Moving down, consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davison?
That's the cash flow worksheet here, where we're at for, as of date when the printing of the meeting, the agenda went out. A few things to kind of note here that are maybe special in this timeframe versus maybe a normal time, would be the collection of taxes. Generally, our main source of revenue from, for the district is from the state of Minnesota in the form of ideas payments, which you would see on the 15th and the 30th of each month. Generally speaking, our district can average between about $550,000 to $700,000, each of those payments from ideas. When county tax payments come in, which would usually be your referendum funds, you'll see an increase in those tax dollars, but a decrease in the ideas payments as the state and county sort of normalize those receipts to the district. So you'll see on the October 25th, Dakota County and Good D'County tax receipts, it's followed correspondingly then by the October 30th ideas payment of a lesser month than what we may normally receive. The second part of the tax collection will come in the first part of November, and you'll see that Dakota County and Good D'County, between the two, about $800,000, and then on November 15th, there is no ideas payment from the state, as those two tax payments have gone to help kind of balance out the revenue we would have received from the state of Minnesota. Other things that would kind of be of interest throughout the rest of this report would be, we have tech leases and bus leases that come due. While it would be nice if we had within our funds to be able to just purchase outright buses, the expenditure can be anywhere between $90,000 and $100,000 per bus in order to maintain a fleet, sometimes you need more than just one bus a year, so lease buses usually over a five-year term. Those are what those lease payments are for bussing and the bus company. Last one would be of kind of note, about two-thirds of the way down the sheet, the 2015 A, that's a debt service payment for part of the energy project that had been done a few years ago, and that comes out as two payments, one in December, one in August. August is just a interest-only payment, whereas this is a principal and an interest payment. Just kind of the quick and short version of the financial report is, we are currently wrapping up this fiscal '21 audit. With the large amount of federal funds we received as a result of COVID and the ESAR funds, the CARES funds, we exceeded the limit for a single audit, and that is a requirement for a district to do and complete, just to add some time and some work to that process, so just a little bit slow in coming, but hopefully be able to present that audit to you on the November meeting. If you have any questions, I can do my best to answer, and if there are questions regarding on expenditures, certainly a phone call through my office or email, my extension's 1402, my email will be listed on the school website, sisdavison.josh@cf.k12.mn.us.
Any questions for Josh?
If there's a finance committee meeting, it'll be through the board.
Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown. I'll move to approve.
One second.
Bill, on the motion. Brenda, on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Consent agenda. Items under consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any particular item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. I think we usually start with Mr. Sampson recognizing the gifts to the district.
Yes, I'll take a few minutes, we got quite a few donations this month. We have a $23 donation from John and Shelley Keelman, and there are two books for Mrs. Bowen's class. We have a $12.99 donation from Sheena Bechtold, a book for Mrs. Bowen's class, and also a $12.99 donation from Heather and James Lannard, is another book for Mrs. Bowen's classroom. We do have quite a few donations from the Ed Foundation, as you can read there, we have a $315 donation plus shipping and tax for Finance Instruction's Secret Stories, and for Mrs. Dyson, $436 for Mrs. Katerlick's room for document cameras, $1,000 donation for a multiplication carnival put on by Mrs. Katerlick, $477.60 from Easy Readers for classroom libraries in Mrs. Albert's room, $974.92 for USB mice and batteries for Mrs. Katerlick, $1,500 for the, from the Ed Foundation for Maker Materials for the Elementary IMC for Mrs. Kopp, and finally, $671.96 for a world map rug in Mrs. Albert's room. We want to thank all of our donors for this.
Have you had a chance to look over the minutes to make sure they're correct?
Mm-hmm.
And to look over the monthly bills to make sure they're accurate? Do you have any questions on either one of those? If not, when you're ready, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown. Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca, on the motion? Do we hear a second?
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. No old business, under new business, informational update about the Achievement and Integration Plan.
Yes, thank you. We were notified by MDE, and in conversation with the Red Wing Public Schools, MDE informed Red Wing that they don't actually qualify for Achievement and Integration for this coming school year, however, they are going to allow both Red Wing and Cannon Falls to move forward this year with that program, which both schools have agreed to do, because we're already starting school this year and have plans, and then we will see if Red Wing would qualify again this next year to continue the plan. If they don't qualify, to answer the lady's question over here, is that we would have to have somebody that's adjoining to us that would qualify. And I think the only other district that is large enough to do that would be Haysdale at this point, so. I would say that we're, if Red Wing doesn't qualify next year, I would probably say that we are not going to continue with that at this point.
Can I ask a question, Jeff? So it says because of their population numbers, that mean they don't have enough population?
Yeah, their percentage population is too low at this point, and so therefore they don't qualify. I'm not sure what happened at the state about why they qualified to begin with, and we were notified of this last March or whenever, when the planning started for that, but for whatever reason, that changed.
Kate, informational update on the strategic plan doc?
Yes, actually, I've got that stuff here. Strategic plan, the board has asked me to bring this plan back just for a review every now and then, it's been a couple of months since we looked at it prior to that. Things are starting to round into shape a little bit more here as we continue to have time in school, and as you can see on the document, some of these items are coming into better focus as far as when we should be able to complete them, some of them have already been completed and those are highlighted. The resetting of some of the target dates, as we've done in, over the past year or so because of COVID. So this document should be a very good representation of where we are at now. You look at some of the strategic priorities that the board came up with in 2019, the first one was to develop and implement a comprehensive communication plan. Our marketing committee is currently working on that process, and we do have some items in there that the administrative staff will be working on as well. Item number two, increasing the fund balance to ensure that the district is financially stable and within board policy. I think that's been ongoing since my first month I started here, and obviously we've gone through cuts the first year, and we are looking at going into cuts again this Item number three, developing a long-range facilities plan and budget that includes a maintenance program, that's obviously been a talk of the May bond vote and potentially the upcoming vote in February. Item number four, developing a safety plan that includes mental wellness and secure facilities. Some of this was completed with the addition at the elementary team. Stephen and the principals have been doing a great job working with the safety committee on keeping our safe plans updated as we have gone over the past couple of years. The ALICE update has been taking place at the very beginning of this year. ALICE is our response by our administration and staff and what students can do in the case of an emergency, we will say. And item number five, develop collaborative career and college readiness opportunities. Right before COVID started, actually, we had hired a career navigator in partnership with four other districts, and that person has been working with Tim and our high school counselor on developing those programs, so that's been ongoing since COVID began, it's been a little rocky, obviously, during that timeframe. Developing post-secondary options, those items are still in the planning phase. Obviously, part of the bond question coming up, the potential bond question, is the renovation of the CTE area, and that'll be fitting nicely into this plan as well. Thoughts or comments on this document?
No? Questions? Okay, you want to drop down to soup goals?
Yep. So obviously, the strategic priorities fall into the superintendent goals. At the latest evaluation, we decided to keep the same goals and add on to them, so we kind of divided this up into the 2021 school year, which was last year, and the completion of that, and then started a new 2122 school year for all three of the goals. And this sheet will be continually updated heading into the mid-year evaluation, I'll do an update probably in April, and then obviously we have a final evaluation in June.
Questions on goals? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And by the way, I skipped you on recommend, or on your soup report, you just led on, led into three of them, and you can, as we get to those particular agenda items, you can...
Hey, I do want to backtrack on one, from the beginning of the superintendent's report, just an update on the COVID committee. We did start rapid testing program last week that went off pretty well, I will use Pam's words, I guess, about as well as it could be expected. And we have initially only given out the parental consent and the sign-up for the testing companies online so that the parents can access that information, because we wanted to see how well people could do signing up on their own, and it looks like people are able to handle this, and so we'll probably be sending out both the parental consent and the BINAX account sign-up to parents yet this week so that we can get them onboarded ahead of time instead of waiting until their child gains symptoms. So COVID committee meeting this Friday, we'll give that update as well then, so. Numbers have been staying okay, I guess, at this point, they've been riding a rollercoaster every now and then, but I would say they're okay right now.
Okay. Questions? Okay, moving down, resolution filling the school board vacancy by appointment. As you all know, one of our board members has resigned, and due to that resignation and keeping up with our certification as board, we need to fulfill that spot. It will be a one-year appointment or election, if you will. The board members are the electors, for lack of better. A year from now, when the regular election takes place, that same person... The board members are the electors, for lack of better. A year from now, when the regular, um, election takes place, uh, that same person will be, um, will be due to be elected to that four-year term if they so desire. Um, there's five of us here, so there has to be a clear majority of three, uh, members to that, uh, person that will be both nominated and voted upon. Um, we can have discussion after nominations if you wish, or you can lead into nominations immediately if you wish. It's your call, but we will, we will, uh, look for some discussion if you so choose. There'll be no public input to this. This is strictly a board, a board decision, uh, and that was the recommendation of Greg Abbott as well as, uh, past practice. So at this time, I would like the clerk to read the people who have applied to be that, uh, vacancy fulfiller.
Okay. The people who applied are Mitch Headline, Clinton Schoquist, Nell Swining, Luke Winchell, Christopher Dobson, Diane Johnson, Amber Garrett, Jolynn Williams, Pamela Collins, and Marlo Pranky.
Okay. Um, we've heard of other districts in our area that have went right into nomination, and we also know that there's some that, uh, would open for some board discussion. So, uh, immediately, I'm looking for people who want to, um, have any discussion on the candidates, have any input on the candidates. Uh, all positive in nature because these people have given their time to at least be considered for that. So thank you very much. Does anyone have any input, any discussion items, anything like that?
Yeah, I would just also like to thank all the applicants for so many people stepping forward and taking the time to fill out the application with some very thoughtful responses. So it's a, it's a difficult choice to make, so thanks again for stepping up.
Yes, thank you.
Have you all read the applications and the information on there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to just comment that, you know, I was surprised to see ten names on the list. We haven't had that quite of interest in the past, so, um, I appreciate that. And then whatever happens with the appointee, uh, just know that in November, you know, it's then up to the general public to elect that individual, so that doesn't mean you can't apply at that point.
Okay.
Next November, Bill?
Next November. Yep, next November. November of twenty-two.
Two, yeah. Okay. If we're ready to proceed, and nobody has any questions or statements from here, you've read the information that they've given us on their applications, which is kind of our guideline in some respect. So I would be looking for a nomination.
I'll nominate Winchell.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Diane Johnson.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Other nominations the second time? Third and final call for other nominations. Nominations will close. So at this point in time, by a show of hands, we are looking for, um, a vote on either Luke Winchell or Diane Johnson, and I'd ask you for a show of hands so we can clearly see who you're voting for. All in favor of Luke Winchell, please raise your hand. Two. All in favor of Diane Johnson, please raise your hand. Two, three. By majority, Diane Johnson, um, if she still wants it, will be our next, um, board member until the upcoming election of 2022. Thank you. I would, um, look for a motion to approve the results.
Yep.
I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Rebecca made the motion, and Katie? There. So to do this accurately, we need, um, there's a resolution on the floor for Diane Johnson, and...
Resolution filing school board vacancy by appointment. Whereas a vacancy exists in the office of school board member with a term expiring the first Monday in January 2023, and whereas the vacancy occurred more than ninety days prior to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, in the year the vacancy occurred and prior to the fourth year of the vacant term. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Two Fifty-Two State of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section One Twenty-three B point zero-nine, sub, subsection B, five B, Diane Johnson is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and to serve until a successor is elected and qualified. The appointment shall be elective thirty days after the adoption of this resolution unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the school district clerk pursuant to the Minnesota Statute Section One Twenty-three B point zero-nine, sub, is it?
Subdivision?
Subdivision, subdivision five B, within that thirty-day time period. We'll take a roll call vote. Bob?
And the question is again, Diane?
Diane.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And Katie?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Moving forward, consideration to approve the review and comment to be sent to the MDE. Jeff?
Uh, yes, last month, we, we talked about this document coming forward, um, from both the Facility and Finance Committee. And to answer an earlier question, uh, about question one and the tech, uh, committee amount, um, in the information sessions and the information being passed out, there will be information on what that money is going to be spent on. And so that document, uh, documentation will be coming out for that in the information sessions and in the pamphlets. So hopefully, that helps, um, answer that question, and then obviously, there will be time for people to ask questions as well around that. Um, but we do need an approval of this document tonight to be sent up to MDE for approval to stay on deadlines for the states.
So it was under my understanding that the technology piece or the money, um, was going to be like, to free up our budgetary amounts that we're currently paying for, like the one-to-one initiative?
Yep.
The updating of our Wi-Fi systems, like all, anything related in the classroom to the technology piece, correct? Like the curriculum?
Yep, anything related to technology.
So then the money we have budgeted for that right now can be released to, to cover other operating funds? Okay.
So this would be capital dollars that are assigned to everything, technology.
Correct, right.
Because right now, we're using operating dollars, and the, kind of a cardinal sin of school districts is using operating dollars for bonding stuff.
Right.
And so this would help free up those dollars.
Okay. Just wanted to...
Yep.
Make sure I had that correct.
And the review and comment, of course, is a procedural move that we need to make to stay on task.
In order to go.
To send this document up, to approve sending that up.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the review and comment.
I'll move to approve.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Brenda? On the second. Other questions? All in favor of approval of the review and comment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the first reading of the resolution calling the election.
Um, so in this election resolution, uh, it's a lot of legal items, obviously, um, but in here, you will find, um, the questions for both, uh, the technology capital projects levy and the, um, building bond question. And so here are the two questions as they are presented here. Uh, there is tax impact for the building part here, and we, I believe we've already looked at the tax impact for the, um, capital projects levy as well. Here's the second question.
Yeah? Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the first reading of the resolution calling the election.
Yep. If the board wants to see something changed in the question, this would be a good time to talk about that because the final reading of this document, or we could even talk about it at the final reading before it's passed, but we should have, uh, this resolution passed in its final stages by the November eighth meeting so that we can keep up the timeline as well to keep us on track for February. So basically, this is just the first reading.
First, first of two readings.
Yep.
Look for a motion.
I just have a question.
Yep.
Um, would there be any way to give more, like wording into that question one so that it is more, um, so that the, the general public can understand what it's going towards? Like, so that they didn't see any of the other things that are out there, or if they just saw it, but for the first time, they read it at the poll, they'd at least understand?
Yeah. The list is...
Is long.
Pretty.
Yeah. So I know we don't want it to be wordy and, but...
The more wording you put in there...
The less people will read.
It could, well, it could confuse people first of all.
Okay.
And in the informational items, we have a spreadsheet going right now of what we have listed out as, you know, hardware, software, this amount.
Sure.
Staffing, this amount.
Okay.
Curriculum, this amount.
Okay.
I mean, it, it'll be laid out in the informational sessions.
Okay.
And if you, if you put more in there, then people start overreading it.
Sure, and not, it may not make as much sense. Got it. Nope, that's, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We look for a motion in a second on this. We can, we can, uh, have more discussion if you wish, but look for a motion to approve the first reading of the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Rebecca on the second? So we have a motion and a second on the floor for the first reading of the resolution calling the election. Is there any other discussion? If not, clerk, do your thing.
All right, I just don't know how much do we, do we read all of them?
I would do the whole thing, would be here.
Just this?
You could read the resolution relating to determining the necessity.
Until then, till here? Okay. Resolution relating to determining the necessity of approving a capital project levy authorization and issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon. So we'll do a roll call vote of Bob?
Do you want to approve those together?
Read them separately.
Do you read them separately? Because there's this one, too. Can I do this one at the same time?
Oh, yeah. If you can do them separately at the same time.
At the reso, and also, resolution relating to determining the necessity of approving a capital project levy authorization and issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon.
Yes, vote would be for the...
Yes, 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 vote would be for the approval. Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
That is passed by a five-zero vote. Consideration to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two seniority list for the educators.
Uh, yes, this list has been passed, uh, to the teachers' union and has been, we have not been made aware of updates or if we have, I think Lori's made the changes already, so this has been, we're just waiting on our approval for the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Other discussion? All in favor of the twenty-one, twenty-two teacher seniority list, say aye.
Aye.
Carry. Consideration to approve the twenty-one through twenty-four district technology plan.
Um, I believe the intent was to have this on in July and it didn't quite make it, or even August, uh, but the district will need to approve the technology plan for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four, and I believe this was talked at the last tech committee meeting, uh, if any of you were there, because I think Anna was on that committee, right, Lori? So she may have been the one that was there, unfortunately.
Um, and we just were at the most recent one, which was the past week.
Oh, we were.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Rebecca and I were both there.
Perfect. So would you like to discuss this at all or any highlights?
Um, it was, he just talked about, you know, all of the different schools just getting different projects done and being updated, but it wasn't really in depth of this.
Okay. Diane?
We learned a lot about multi-facing...
Yeah.
...security concerns and, like, the cyber, like, the cyber attacks and, and on the information.
Yeah, I, I think you're into, like, the two-factor...
That's it, yes.
Two-factor authentication.
Thank you.
And I should not get out too far over my skis on technology here as well, but yes, you're right, because, um, there's been a lot of schools in the area that have been cut through ransomware recently, and we've got to make sure that our insurance is keeping up to that, as is our technology, security systems.
Those are the two things we...
Okay. I'd look for a motion to approve the twenty-one through twenty-four district technology plan.
Make a motion to approve.
Rebecca?
I'll second.
On the motion, Katie on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of the technology plan for the upcoming three years, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. How's your year been since we last talked?
Pretty good. There's not a whole lot new going on since the last time, but, um, night school and homework help have both started in the school. Night school is for credit recovery, so if anyone needs to make up credits to graduate. Um, homework help is tutoring every Tuesday and Thursday afternoon. That's through Honor Society, so you can talk to Ms. Hoffman or Mr. Strauss about getting signed up for that. Um, some sports stuff, the dance started tonight, super exciting, first winter sport to start. And then football and volleyball are just going into their postseason, and they're both doing amazing right now. And then another thing that will be coming up is student council is doing We Scare Hunger. It's a yearly food donation that we do. We'll be passing out flyers to the Ridgecrest community, asking on Halloween to donate food instead of, like, candy to, there'll be student council members walking around asking for those donations. So there should be flyers coming out later this week, and we'll be collecting food on Halloween night. That's all we've got.
Thank you. Always busy, always busy.
You said that's in which they've been?
Bridgecrest.
Okay.
Where's the donate and then come right from dance practice, so...
Yeah.
Just that, I just came from dance practice. Thanks for coming.
Okay, informational items for our next board meeting, November eighth. Audit presentation, World's Best Workforce Plan for Cannon Falls. Second reading of the resolution calling the election. Appointment of election judges. Board members, if you see anything or wish to put anything else on the agenda, please contact Lori or Jeff for discussion and possible addition. So does anyone wish to, uh, pose with anything, any discussion items? Okay, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. We are finished. Thank you, good night.